Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council meeting for Monday, December 10, 2012. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'd move into the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Councillor Crokin.
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. I move the minutes to the city council meeting held November 26, 2012 be adopted.
Thanks very much, Councillor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Did anyone note any errors or omissions? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And that brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Monroe.
Thanks, Mayor Gibbon. I'll move that council adopt the agenda as presented with the addition of item number 8.1, appointments to boards and committees.
Great. Thanks very much, Councillor Monroe. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is the opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any matter. And we have one delegation that let us know in advance that they were going to come. The Honorable Wayne Drysdale, Minister of Infrastructure for our province and MLA for Grand Prairie property, no stranger to the council chambers, Emily Drysdale. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Worship us as usual. I say counsel for allowing me to come here and present once a year. I like to come and hear what your thoughts are and more so hear what your questions are than what I'm not here to give you a big story. You usually read it, but it's always the interaction and the good questions that I appreciate coming here for. And I also wanted to, while I was here, thank you for coming to Edmonton a few weeks ago. I think you did a very good job of letting my colleagues know some of the concerns of Grand Prairie. And it always helps me and ever do our job if they hear the same thing from you guys. Appreciate that very much. And it was well received, lots of good comments from some of my colleagues out there as well. So, thank you for that. You know, our government is committed to building Alberta's economic future and supporting families and communities and communities such as this and the good work you're doing. I know probably some of the biggest pressures I see here and here from the public lots in Grand Prairie is our schools and our lack of, I guess, or need some more infrastructure in schools. So, I'm hearing that loud and clear and I'm sure you are as well. And so, working with my colleague Jeff Johnson, Minister of Education, hopefully we'll have some good news in the new year on some of those schools here. As you know, we did the sod turning in the fall here for the new high school. You know, and you might think that it's the high school, but what about the elementary? But it does move down to grade nine now, so that moves the elementaries, takes some pressure off them as well because now they'll be K to eight instead of K to nine. So, you know, even the high school will actually help the elementaries as well. We know we need to build some more schools there. There's no doubt about that. And also, the hospital, I don't know if any of you had the chance to go to the open house. That was a week or so ago. From what I hear, it was well received and good information there and positive comments. So, I think that's going to be great for our community and city, new regional facility, which will be good. You know, I think you guys just are in the process or have gone through your budget presentations and that's kind of what we're doing as well now out there. Things are tight with the differential on the oil. We've lost quite a bit of income from our projections this year going into next year, so it'll be a tight budget. But we're still going to do what we can to build infrastructure. I mean, we've never had a problem balancing the operating budget. It's always the infrastructure in the building that seems to be where we balance our budget is on the back of infrastructure. So, we've got some ideas. Hopefully, we can still build some good infrastructure in the next coming years with some alternative financing. We also passed 10 pieces of legislation this fall. Maybe didn't hear much about it, but there was some good bills passed. Some of it will affect the city as well, the Elections Act, Bill 7. I also wanted to congratulate you on that. I hear you'll be taking part in the electronic voting possibly coming up in the next election as a pilot project. I think that'll be a really good useful tool for the community. I'm interested to see how that works out for you. And I think there's lots of room for expansion on that in the future, so good luck with that. I guess I'm still waiting for my letter on the Young Offender Centre, but I hear it's coming, so we'll deal with that as we come. And thanks for your presentation on that in Edmonton. So, probably with that, I'll just open it up to questions if anybody has any.
Sure. By all means. Minister Drysdale, thanks very much for making the time. We certainly appreciate having you here and appreciated both you and Emily McDonald spending time with us in Edmonton and really, we know that both your schedules are very busy, so to sit through the entire day and back us up as we met with each of the individual ministers was certainly appreciated, I think, by our group. And we know that you'd just come in from Toronto the night before and had a few long sessions at the ledge, so your commitment to making sure that the region was well represented was really appreciated. So, questions for Wayne? Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. Thank you, Wayne, because you come every year and it's very look forward to it as well. In Edmonton, I have to say, you're one of the most gracious open ministers that there is. And I want to thank you for all the counsel when we're into the legislature, when you were debating and you have made us, everybody stand up and announce that Grand Prairie Council was here. So, that meant a lot. I just had one question on, and the one thing was brought out in the city too, how Grand Prairie is so young and growing, children under four are just as many as seniors 65 and over in the city. So, when you were saying about the schools, it's a very important issue. And the one I wanted to get is what bill was it for, I don't know, Bill 5, Bill 7? Like you said, you've passed 10. That is for public workers. It's a whistleblower's bill, I guess. What bill is that one?
That was Bill 4. Bill 4 was the Public Interest Disclosure Act or Whistleblower Protection Act.
Okay. The only question I got from different people in the community, I think it was just regulated to public workers. It was kind of vacant on private industry or whatever, like if you seen an issue and you could bring it up. That wasn't brought up or anything, it was just public work?
Yeah. It was more for public employees because the, you know, the private employees have their other act that they follow under the...
It's a different one, but I...
Employment Standards Act.
I've been asked about that because it just seemed like, why wasn't it both together?
Well, they were covered before, private employees. This just covered public employees.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor McLean. Minister Drysdale, just wanted to make a couple notes. I see there's some other councillors in the queue, but thanks very much for your support on Bill 7. The four-year terms were contained in there and obviously, that's something that was a City of Grand Prairie resolution at AUMA a number of years ago and was supported at AA MDNC. And so, it's nice to see that actually become legislation. And I also just wanted to express my support around the question of future infrastructure needs. Mayor Melissa Blake had a really great op-ed in the Edmonton Journal, speaking about smart debt. And really, I hope the province is considering when you speak about alternate financing. I think we expressed the opinion to all party leaders when we were in Edmonton at the legislature that I think by and large, the community of Grand Prairie would be supportive of having mortgages on buildings if it meant that our kids were going to be able to get into schools. So, I just want to take this opportunity to publicly express my support for that position. I think that's shared by all of our council and we certainly were happy to express that to your colleagues from all parties when we're in the legislature. And so, I think you're hearing that from across the province that there's a willingness from Albertans to see the infrastructure and facilities that they need and it's reasonable to have those costs spread over a few generations. So, please, by all means, pass on our support to that to all your colleagues.
Right. Now, that was a good article by Mayor Blake, like you pointed out. If anybody gets a chance, they could read that. But thank you very much for that support. I know, city council, you use the opportunity to finance some of your projects or they wouldn't happen as well, so thank you for that.
Definitely. Councillor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Gibbon. Thanks, Wayne. Yeah, that was a good meeting with you and your colleagues out in Edmonton. And thank you very much for supporting the Highway 43X. We are going to be annexing out that way and it's in the process. It's at full speed now. But I really appreciated when you had brought up, and I have mentioned this to a few citizens that they didn't know the figure, that you had said that the traffic count on Highway 43, 43 going through the city of Grand Prairie, is about 42,000 units a day. It's a higher traffic count than Highway 63 up to Fort McMurray. So, thank you for that. I know the minister, I don't believe Minister MacGyver knew that fact and thank you very much for making him aware of that fact. Hopefully, I know the three-year budgets and everything is tight, but I know they're sure looking at the large trucks anyway to get them traveling around the city. We still want tourists and people coming into the city, but it'd be nice to get those larger trucks, just for safety reasons. We do have the new hospital and that's a dangerous truck route or dangerous goods route, so we wouldn't want any kind of an accident along our new, by our new regional hospital.
Right. And as I said, our budget is tight this year, but Emily McDonald and myself are doing what we can to make sure that's at the top of the list. And thank you for that support as well to see that.
Councillor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. Wayne, I want to echo first of all, the sentiment of thanks from my colleagues to you for all your support out in Edmonton when we're out there during our, throughout our advocacy efforts. It's nice to hear when we're talking to the ministers that they have spoken to our local MLAs and the same message is being portrayed throughout the ledge. So, that's really necessary for us to know that we have local representative there at all times, even if we can't be there. My question has to do with Highway 43, but on the east side of Grand Prairie, just this side of Valley View, can you give us an idea of the timing for completion of that highway?
Yeah. Well, the one section, as you know, was closed. You know, we were hoping it to be completed this fall, but that contract, you know, it was, I think you had some projects in the city as well. They got caught by our early winter this year by a month. So, they had good plans of having that finished this fall, so I don't think it'll take long next spring to get that first section completed. And the contract on the next piece or the final piece is out there right now. I hear it's just waiting to be signed. And so, that, you know, if things went well, it could be completed in a year, but I think it's a two-year contract and it supposedly will be signed this winter. So, by the end of '14, I would hope the whole thing is finished. The next year, for sure, the first half will be paved all over.
Okay. Yeah, I know there's a lot of people out there just anxious for that 80-kilometer-an-hour zone to be finished with. Thanks very much for that.
Thanks.
Any further questions? Councillor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. Wayne, just, I just wanted to, we have done this already with Sherry, but I wanted to in a public forum, just make sure you thanked her on our behalf. She was, she is an excellent ambassador for Grand Prairie area and she demonstrated that at our reception. And so, just want to really thank her for helping us out.
Thank you for that, Lauren. I'll make sure I pass that on.
That's great.
Any further questions? Wayne, if not one other, I don't expect a ton of detail, but just to convey to you how important MSI has been for our community and obviously, communities across the province. The program is up for renewal and I know the premier and the minister have said that they're looking at renewing the program, but certainly, I wanted to express that. And I don't know if you have any information you can share on sort of where the government is with MSI.
Well, I think for sure, most of you in the room were at the AUMA convention this fall when the premier, you know, confirmed that we wouldn't be balancing our budget on the backs of municipalities and, you know, we're committed about increasing MSI. You know, with our tight budget this year, how fast that increase is, I guess we'll see, but I don't expect a decrease, that's for sure. I expect an increase and, you know, it would be nice if it got there quicker, but we're still committed to the final number there. And I expect some kind of an increase in next year's budget as well.
That's great. Thanks very much. And also too, we had opportunity to meet with the Associate Minister of Municipal Fairs and if you can pass on to your colleagues in caucus, it's appreciated and not lost on communities like Grand Prairie, Medicine Hat, Lethbridge, Red Deer and the like, that in the Associate Minister's mandate letter, that he has a specific responsibility for ensuring that the views of mid-sized cities are reflected in government policy. That was not lost on any of my colleagues across the province and we're certainly very appreciative for that high profile for mid-sized cities.
Yeah. And he was very supportive after too, and he told me he'd have that piece of business done before Christmas, so we'll see how good he is here.
Well, Wayne, I don't see any other further questions, but thank you very much for taking the time out of your schedule to be here. We know that your time at home is limited and very precious, so we certainly appreciate you choosing to spend some of it with us. Thanks very much.
Thank you. You do a very good job of representing this city, I can tell you that. Thanks very much.
Thanks very much, Wayne. Merry Christmas. So, as I said, this is the delegation portion. You don't have to be the honorable just to show up. You could be any community member. Any community member can come forward and address council during the delegation portion. It doesn't look like we have anybody else coming forward. So, we move on from the delegation portion of our agenda into public hearings, which we had none, we had no unfinished business. And so, that brings us to our added item, item 8.1, boards and committees. And we would start with appointments to the Grand Prairie Public Library Board. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Gibbon. I would like to recommend council approve appointments to the Grand Prairie Public Library Board. Shirley Shercoff be appointed to the Grand Prairie Public Library Board for the remainder of a term ending December 31, 2014. As well, Dave Logan, Wade Nellis, Lynn Coulter and Nevin Baker, the four of them be appointed to the library board for a three-year term ending December 31, 2015.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none on the appointment of those community members, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That takes us on to the appointments for the Take Part, Take Pride Committee. Councillor Monroe?
Thanks very much, Mayor Gibbon. I'll move that Jason Zelling, Stephanie Bockers be appointed to the Take Part, Take Pride Committee for one-year terms ending December 31, 2013. And that Jessica Elliott and Lorna McElroy be appointed to the same committee ending December 31, 2014. And finally, that Amy Horn, our representative from Aquatera, Miriam Manick and Jennifer Bowen be appointed to the Take Part, Take Pride Committee for three-year term, for a three-year term ending December 31, 2015.
Thanks very much, Councillor Monroe. Any discussion or debate on those recommendations? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And that brings us finally to the council remuneration committee. Councillor Wong?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Gibbon. I move that members Kim McDougall, Tricia McCloskey and Warren Travasso appointed to the council remuneration review committee be extended to end on March 1, 2013.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Wong. Just to speak to that briefly, the committee's original mandate was to the end of this year. They've requested some additional time to do that work and so, council is extending, the recommendation is to extend their term to be able to enable them to complete their work. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That was all of our reports and that takes us to committee business and we have some set of minutes from council committee of the whole from November 14. Councillor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. I would move the council receive the minutes of the council committee of the whole meeting held November 14, 2012. This was a council committee of the whole meeting talking about land use bylaw changes and discussions surrounding those changes. Yeah, it's a point in time. Draft will be completed here in the next few months and brought to council more formally at that time.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Did anyone note any errors or omissions? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. We have 9.2, council committee of the whole budget review minutes. Councillor Rice?
I move that council receive the minutes of the council committee of the whole budget review held November 23, 2012.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Rice?
I move that council approve the funding strategies as amended for the 2013 operating and capital budgets.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. I wonder if Mr. Anderson could give us a brief overview as a reminder. Ken?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. Previously, council agreed to a 3.7% property tax adjustment for 2013. That's been reduced to 3.6%. For the average house of assessed the $267,000, that would be a $98 municipal tax change for 2013.
Okay. Thanks very much, Ken. Any further discussion or debate? Questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. We'll move to 9.3, Combat sports commission. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Gibbon. I recommend the council receive the minutes of the Combat sports commission meeting held November 26, 2012.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And that motion carries. Councillor O'Toole?
Yes, we have some bylaw changes I'd like to give. Recommend the council give first reading to bylaw C 1173B, its amendment to the Combat Sports Commission by law.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. So, a motion for first reading, I'll call for the vote.
We'll have a motion for first reading and then on second reading, we'll have discussion and debate. Okay. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor O'Toole?
I can give an outline if you'd like.
If you'd like to make a second reading and then...
Okay. I'd like to make a second reading to bylaw C 1173B.
There you go. And if you'd like to give us an introduction?
Yes. We've got a number of bylaws that needed to be updated to current requirements. And if you were looking in your, your bylaw Schedule A, there's license fees for promoters, the contestant and for each event. We reviewed those. Also, Schedule B, the other fees that basically, we needed to increase for reasons of medical personnel and also the second medical personnel and reinstatement fees we looked at, notice of appeal deposits, a fee for a referee per bout, per person, fee of voluntary supervisory personnel, per person, fee for the judges per bout, per person, and the fee of contestant for late weigh-in. The last event that we had, a number of contestants were late. They were scheduled to be at a certain time and it forced the commission to work a little bit later and hold up a whole bunch of people, which cost us some money. And also, fee for late submission to the contestants' medical paperwork, which also was a bit of a hindrance. Also, Schedule D, we have member reimbursement rates and I think that was it. If there's any other questions, I can take them.
Okay. Discussion and debate. Councillor Rice?
Explain to me the rationale is that should the promoter wish to host an event in a facility other than a city-owned facility or the tech center and use a ticketing agent other than the Crystal Center, an additional financial security will be required. And it was, it's like 10% or something.
Yes, I can give you that. And then actually, I will, I'll talk a little bit about it and I'll pass it off to Mr. Gary Roth. The concern in the past is the Crystal Center has required a deposit in case there was someone that was to walk out at the last minute. And the requirement was, for this event, we book a doctor, we book medical staff, we book hotels and other areas of importance that require money deposits. And if they walk out, there's nothing to support them and the city loses. So, the requirement by Crystal Center was to hold that as a security deposit. And we decide, we as a commission were asked by other promoters, well, what if we don't hold it in the Crystal Center? And we've increased the fees that when you purchase a license.
So, part of that license is the commission takes care of booking the doctor and everything?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions, discussion or debate? Councillor Radburn?
Yes, Helen actually had one of my questions. I guess, I just noticed in the minutes that Mr. Cliff suggested in his opinion, the Crystal Center ticket arrangement should be changed in the commission bylaw, so that gave some background to that feedback, I guess. My other question was, I see in Schedule D, there's member attending an event outside of Grand Prairie, immediate area. Who decides who goes to those such events? Does the chairman of the commission decide who, what would be productive in terms of learning opportunity or do each, does each member decide on their own?
Just a little history on that. This past year, there was a Canadian Combat Commission Association that had an annual general meeting in Vancouver. So, as a commission member for Grand Prairie, I took myself and the vice chairman and also, we took one other individual that's been a long-serving person and we went down. The other long-serving person with a lot of knowledge has been appointed to the Alberta Board and represents Alberta as a commission.
So, my question is, who decides? Does the commission chair decide?
I made that decision.
On a go-forward basis, we're not talking about what's happened.
No. What's happened is, I discussed it with administration here and we'd made that decision.
Oh.
Further questions? Councillor Rice?
Does the commission have like money, a budget, anything?
Councillor O'Toole?
We are for profit.
So, you have your own bank account. So, if you go to something like this, would the commission pay for it or would the city?
Audrey, would you like to touch on that, please?
Mr. Turner, if you could clarify?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. The commission members are appointed by the city of Grand Prairie and the events that they have attended, either as learning events or to further the sport of the Combat Sports Commission in Grand Prairie, has been, expenses have been paid for by the city of Grand Prairie.
So, do they have a budgeted amount in our budget?
It's part of the travel and meeting expenses. There's no separate budget at the moment, no.
Okay. Hasn't that budget just been disbanded?
No, the budget is the same. So, if you're asking about council's meeting and travel expenses budget, Councillor Rice? Yeah, no, that budget...
And if they walk out, there's nothing to support them and the city loses. So, the requirement by Crystal Guard, Crystal Center was to hold that as a security deposit. And we decide, we as a commission were asked by other promoters, well, what if we don't hold it in the Crystal Center? And we've increased the fees that when you purchase a license.
So, part of that license is the commission takes care of booking the doctor and everything?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, discussion or debate? Councilor Radburn?
Yes, Helen actually had one of my questions. I guess I just noticed in the minutes that Mr. Cliff suggested in his opinion the Crystal Center ticket arrangements should be changed in the commission by law, so that gave some background to, to that feedback, I guess. My other question was, I see in Schedule D, there's member attending an event outside of Grand Prairie immediate area. Who decides who goes to those such events? Does the chairman of the commission decide who, what would be productive in terms of learning opportunity or do each, does each member decide on their own?
Just a little history on that. This past year, there was a Canadian Combat Commission Association that had an annual general meeting in Vancouver. So, as, as a commission member for Grand Prairie, I took myself and the vice chairman and also we took one other individual that's been a long-serving person and we went down. The other long-serving person with a lot of knowledge has been appointed to the Alberta Board and represents Alberta as a, as a commission.
So, my question is who decides? Does the commission chair decide?
I made that decision. With...
I mean, in a go-forward basis, we're not talking about what's happened.
No, what's happened is I discussed it with administration here and we'd made that decision.
Oh.
Further questions? Councilor Rice.
Does, does the commission have like money, a budget, anything?
Councilor O'Toole?
We are for profit.
So, you have your own bank account. So, if you go to something like this, would, would the commission pay for it or would the city?
Audrey, would you like to touch on that, please?
Mr. Turner, if you could clarify?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The commission members are appointed by the city of Grand Prairie and the events that they have attended either as learning events or to further the sport of, the Combat sports commission in Grand Prairie has been, expenses have been paid for by the city of Grand Prairie.
So, do they have a budgeted amount in our budget?
It's part of the travel and meeting expenses. There's no separate budget at the moment, no.
Okay, hasn't that budget just been disbanded?
No, the budget is the same. So, if you're asking about council's meeting and travel expenses budget, Councilor Rice? Yeah, no, that budget line item still exists. We made no changes to it other than the way that it was allocated amongst council members. There is, is still an allocation to be able to handle these types of committee.
But what about the other, committee members, it's, comes from where?
Comes from the same pot of money.
None, none council members.
How do you mean, sorry, none council members, sorry.
So, you're asking when we go to an event and we pay the, the public members to attend? That comes out of the, the fees that we collect as well?
Okay.
For the event?
So, so the, the commission generates its own revenue into the city's budget?
Yeah.
But we also, you know, float them, I guess you could say for...
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion or debate? Questions or comments? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote on second reading? Thank you. Okay, and so motion, Councilor O'Toole?
I'd like to have council have third reading of bylaw C eleven seventy-three B at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. So, a motion to have third reading is required if the intent is to have all three readings of a bylaw at the same meeting. This motion must be unanimous for us to move on to third reading. Any discussion or debate on the motion to have third reading?
I can just...
Councilor O'Toole?
I'd like to just make a couple of comments here. We have done a lot of research regarding these fees and the schedules and stuff like that. It's not something that we just come together with and decided these fees would be inappropriate. They are something that's in the nature of the business.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate? Motion to have third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor O'Toole?
Thank you very much. I'd like to have council give third reading to bylaw C eleven seventy-three B.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Any further discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor O'Toole, was there anything else that you wanted to highlight in that set of Combat sports commission minutes?
Well, we just, we do have, we had a delegation from Mr. Darren Cliff, Access of Force Fighting Championships. He will be having an event earlier on in the new year. Also, Five Star Athletics Incorporated will be having an event here February of this next year and, yeah, I think that's pretty much it right now, sir.
Okay, great. Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. We'll move on to nine point four, the public works committee and Councilor Gustafson isn't here, so Councilor Radburn, can you handle that set of minutes for him? Councilor Radburn?
Certainly, thank you. I would move council receive the minutes of the public works committee meeting held November twenty-seventh, two thousand twelve.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Councilor Radburn, anything you wanted to highlight?
Certainly, Mayor Given, thank you. I guess we dealt with a development permit to variance for a commercial business center, business office support service that is permitted in the arterial commercial district. And that's kind of a, a long resources road west of the tracks, east of the resources road in that area there. Secondly, we approved a discretionary use for a development permit for a retail store with gas bar and liquor store in the local commercial district and that's about Ninety-second Street, Ninety-first Avenue in there. And thirdly, we received a report on transit terminal concepts and location and we actually asked that report be brought back to committee after stakeholder meetings have been held. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. So, we'll move on to nine point five, the environment committee. Councilor Monroe?
Thanks very much, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the environment committee meeting held December third, two thousand and twelve.
Thanks very much, Council Monroe. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Sorry, Council McLean?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. To Council Monroe, just on a quick fact, I wasn't able to make that meeting and just a question I have, there was the fact I didn't remember before about Aqua Terra and about commercial use into landfills and how residential now have the blue bag and keep it recycled out. Do we know figures on the waste that commercials bring into our landfill? Could someone, Michelle, answer that? And it's kind of dropped off the base. Is there anything? We hear raising taxes or levies for residential, but we don't hear much about commercial.
Sure, so at this time, we're just doing the minutes. So, did you have any discussion or debate on the minutes?
Not in the minutes. I want to...
Okay, so we'll maybe follow up on that after we finish the committee business? So, any comments on the minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Okay, that motion carries and Council Monroe, you have one item of business coming out and then we can follow up on Council McLean's.
Yeah, absolutely. I can make that motion and then I can talk a little bit about what Council McLean's asking. I'll move that council formalize their support for the Aqua Terra City of Grand Prairie landfill gas to energy and district heat project in the form of a letter from Mayor Given. And just to speak briefly about this, Aqua Terra has already proceeded with a landfill gas to energy district heating project. The project involves bioreactor landfill gas to energy and generator heat recovery project. This project provides benefits including decreased electricity and heating costs for the treatment plants and increased life of the landfill. So, I think the intent of this motion is to, I guess, achieve successful grant funding through the green municipal funds. And by writing this letter, it indicates not only our support, but that the city of Grand Prairie would be essentially a partner in this project. And the grant funding, correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, is upwards of ten million dollars that they're applying for.
Ms. Gardner?
The grant is for a million dollars, but there's funding available up to ten million dollars, part of that which would be low interest loan.
Thank you.
Great, thanks very much, Ms. Gardner. Okay, any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. I think that was all the items of business on that environment committee meeting and so Council Monroe, I don't know if you can speak to the question raised by Council McLean?
Certainly, I can, I can try a little bit here, Mayor Given. So, the construction and demolition waste has been on our outstanding items list for quite some time now. And that is, I guess, basically what we would deem the commercial waste that, at least this is what I understand that you're asking, Council McLean. Anyways, we did have a look at it and we've asked the administration to go back and have a closer look at, at what other municipalities are doing in regards to this and we're expecting a, a report back shortly.
Council McLean?
Thank you, Council Monroe, for that. I just, I'm sitting on the environment committee almost two years now. I don't know why we're delaying and waiting and more studies. There's actually communities in Alberta can more through Alberta Recycles. They're actually diverting waste of eighty percent on apartment buildings, homes, and we are way, way behind of having proper regulation in. And eighty percent of landfill that goes landfills from construction. So, hopefully, we will hear something positive, but hopefully, it's not four or five years and hopefully, something happens because there is communities in Alberta that are way ahead of ours on this issue.
Councilor Monroe?
Sorry. Thanks, Mayor Given. Council McLean, I, I think that the rest of the committee does feel this, or does have similar sentiments to you and we certainly look forward to seeing a report coming back in the near future.
I think one of the other items that was noted at the meeting where we discussed this was that Aqua Terra has actually on their own put in a significant amount of diversion. They have source separation of wood materials, metal materials, and also drywall recycling as well, which is something that they've initiated over the last couple of years. And so, in addition to what the committee was looking for, there was some relatively new initiatives that we'd seen that were having a positive impact. Aqua Terra, a few meetings ago, had also mentioned that they are, have had some relative success with the implementation of their residential recycling for multifamily units. They'd mentioned that when they launched the blue bag program, it was obviously aimed at single-family homes. It took a little while for them to get their multi-unit dwelling program up and running. And my understanding right now is that all of the multi-unit buildings that wished to participate at this time are participating. All the others have the option to, but some for various reasons, sometimes related to the amount of space available around the building, have chosen not to participate at this time, although the option is available to them. So, sort of, I know you were looking at construction waste, but you mentioned apartments and diversion, I guess, in general and Aqua Terra's made some good steps in ensuring that all Grand Prairie residents have access to basically residential recycling that picks up from wherever they live. Council McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given, for that. And you're right, they have started things in the start from the start, but it's in baby stages and looking forward to some very good input hopefully for the next election because it's baby stages. Thank you.
Council Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I think what Council McLean was alluding to was when we were at the Alberta Recycling Conference, they did a presentation on construction and demolition waste and Grand Prairie is no different than other communities or it, commercial waste makes up about three-quarters of the volume at the landfill, which is a significant amount. So, no matter how much we as individuals try to make a difference, we can only affect that twenty-five percent. There's other municipalities like Wood Buffalo who are forming or they're, they're taking an initiative to get rid of their construction or as much of their commercial waste as possible and they're funding it through, through the carbon offsets that their new initiatives are going to, going to create. So, they believe that in the long run, it's going to be a self-funding venture. So, that's maybe something that we could bring to Aqua Terra at their next business meeting or their shareholders' meeting, that maybe this is the next step for us and they could use Wood Buffalo as a model.
Interesting. Thanks very much, Council Wong. Okay, if there was nothing further on the environment committee meeting, then we move on to general government services from December fourth. Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move council receive the minutes of the general government service committee meeting held December fourth, two thousand twelve.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Anyone note any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Council Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council authorize the city of Grand Prairie to participate in an application for the shared internet voting pilot project under the regional collaboration component of the regional collaboration program and further that the city of Grand Prairie participant agrees to abide by the terms of the conditional grant agreement governing the purpose and use of the grant funds. This is, I guess, formalizing our decision at budget time. We made that decision at budget time and this now provides direction for administration to proceed with accessing that grant.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Council Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Anything else you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes? Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I, three other things we received for information, Myers, Norris, Pennies audit service plan for this, for the two thousand twelve year. It'll begin early in thirteen. Received for information, a facilities master plan update and received inf- information, the OSB Big Press Center project, where it's at. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much, Council Radburn. I believe that finishes all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence. Our delegation business was simply the presentation from Minister Drysdale. I don't know, maybe we could have a motion to receive his presentation for information. Councilor Crokin?
I move we receive Minister Drysdale's report for information.
Thanks very much, Council Crokin. Discussion and debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. We had no notices of motion tonight and we have, do have a couple of council member reports. Council Crokin, I believe you had Peace Library System.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a couple of quick little highlights. Linda Duplessis, our, our director, presented the board with the reviewed, the two thousand twelve financial forecast. Revenue and expenditures throughout the year fluctuated, but should result in a deficit of just sixty-five hundred dollars, which is ten thousand dollars less than budgeted and on over a million-dollar budget, that's, she's doing a terrific job. The, the one thing that was brought up, the, the director reported, Linda again, that former Peace Library System Director, I'm sure a lot of you knew her, Patricia Jobe, passed away October tenth, two thousand twelve. Pat was the director from nineteen eighty-nine to nineteen ninety-five. She oversaw the transfer of the University of Alberta Extension Collection to the Peace Library System, the negotiation of the first automation system contract and construction of the new building that we're presently in. In honor of her memory, the Alberta Library, TAL is it they use, has renamed its award for outstanding service as the Pat Jobe Service Award. So, very honored to, to have her get that. She was a hard-working lady. So, that's all I have for Peace Library.
Thanks very much, Council Crokin. Council O'Toole, I believe you had South East Regional Archives Society?
Yes, I do, Mayor Given. Just, we had a little bit of a meeting here the other day and we got some sessions that showed up between September first and November thirtieth. Just to give you a highlight of some of the records that we have been receiving, we have the Westerdorf family photographs. They date back from nineteen thirty-seven to nineteen forty-six. Larson's garage in Eaglesham, nineteen fifty-three. Let's see, what else we got here? The NRA photographs, nineteen twenty to nineteen eighty-five. We've got some papers here that date back to nineteen fourteen. The nineteen sixty-two time capsule that the city of Grand Prairie had. And we have the Blueberry Creek School reunion records. So, those are just some of the, the efforts that have been, are now stored in the, the archival bank that we have at the museum. Also, we've just produced another little short booklet of some stories that have taken place in the peace country. And if you do not have one of these little booklets, you can go and get them down at the, or the museum. They will be posted also in the library and we may even have some here at the city hall. We're trying to make sure that they're available. And one of our, a couple of our staff down there and board members have drawn up this little cartoon comic book type thing that basically implies that there's a lot of records out there that most people feel is just junk or garbage. It's not history, but anything from old clubs, fly tires groups, bowling clubs and that sort of thing, school records. And it just shows where the interest is and, and it's kind of cute. And I'd like to thank Gordon and Leslie for producing this and we'll have some of these at the, in fact, we have some upstairs and they'll be in and around the area as well. So, thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Council O'Toole. And I note the telling our stories booklet is actually, it's always a really good read. I believe it's also available electronically on the South East Regional Archives website too.
Yes, anytime you want to look on the website there, I've got documents of how many times we've actually had hits and we've had four thousand nine hundred and sixty-two hits in the last three months. Sorry, from January to November.
That's great. Thanks very much, Council O'Toole. Unless there are any council member reports from external agencies or boards that I missed, then we'd start with council roundtable. Maybe we'll start with Council Wong since he's way over there on the corner by himself.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. On Tuesday and Wednesday, November twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, I attended with council and the mayor, council day at the legislature. I would have to say it was a fantastic evening. The first night that we were there, we invited the college, the home builders, the school board trustees, along with ourselves, and we, we made quite an impression, especially with that great big map of Grand Prairie and the Chamber of Commerce as well. Thank you, Council O'Toole. Thursday, November twenty-ninth, in the morning, I attended the unmanned vehicle presentation for GPREP. I also was at the Chamber Mixer at the Showcase Center, formerly known as Ovation's Dinner Theater that evening, as well as the GP Regional Hospital Open House at the college. Friday, November thirtieth, we had our council committee of the whole meeting. Sunday, December second, I participated with other members of council and the mayor at the Santa Claus Parade. I really do commend those... and the mayor at the Santa Claus Parade. I really do commend those people that stuck it out with us at minus-20 weather, with a little bit of a breeze. Smaller turnout than usual, but everyone was still very enthusiastic to be out there. Monday, December 3rd, I was at the Eastlake Center for the Proclamation for International Day of Persons with Disabilities. Got a chance to sit in a wheelchair and play some basketball, as well as work on those crank bikes. And I even got a chance to use one of those motorized wheelchairs, which I thought was a really neat experience. Later that day, I also went to the Grand Prairie Regional College and had an interview with one of their consultants for their long-term vision. December 5th, our Wapiti Quarter Planning Society had a small informal meeting, as well as a little Christmas gathering. Thursday, December 6th, I was at the Chamber of Commerce AGM at Center 2000. I want to congratulate the new president, Shawna Miller, and the rest of the board members for the upcoming year. Friday, December 7th, we were at the annexation meeting with the county. And finally, just this morning, I read some books and played some games at The Kids Place at the Dave Bar Community Center.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Counselor Rice?
I attended the reception at the, with our Legislative Assembly representatives and the people that Counselor Wong has mentioned. It was, I think, very impressive to see the all facets of the Grand Prairie life at that. And I think, I think our MLAs were impressed. Want to thank the Honorable Wayne Drysdale and MLA Everett McDonald. I think their presence certainly sent a message to the other MLAs. Attended the Volunteer Services Bureau Volunteer Awards Breakfast. Of course, I had breakfast served by the ever-industrious Counselor Monroe. And congratulations to Jennifer Douglas, the Volunteer of the Year. So, it was great. I attended the council committee at the whole meeting on November 14th, and the land use bylaw on November 23rd on council budget. I thought it was extremely interesting. A few facts that are a little out of date at this point, but it seems to change by the hour this year. So, as of December 4th, we had used 1,000 tons of salt. The average annual use is 1,700. So, we are over half through our average uses. But that might be because we had up till the 4th, 101 centimeters of snow, and the average annual snowfall is 158 centimeters. So, I don't think it'll be any surprise to all of us, as it keeps, every time you look out the window, it's coming down. So, I think so far, we've done a real good job of staying on top of that in a very, very difficult year.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Gibbon. Looking out the windows, I can't. The snow has covered my windows. Again, on November 27th and the 28th, I was also with council in Edmonton at the open house reception, which we had a map of the City of Grand Prairie, which was laid on the floor, and it gave a real different perspective of where the things were in the City of Grand Prairie, like our new hospital and our bypass and whatever. And it was nice to see the opposition, also Danielle and Raj show up to have a look at what's happening up in Grand Prairie. Then on the 29th, I went to the information session at the college on the hospital. It was very, very informative. And then 30th, I got an annexation update. And then December 1st, I attended, that was Saturday, I attended the Peace Library Executive General Meeting. On the 2nd, of course, I went along with the Santa Claus Parade, and there was an abundance of children out there that braved the weather. And I want to thank Jody. She did a really good job with the candy canes and made sure our pails were full, and we were handing them out quite generously, at least one counselor was. A couple of mine stuck together, but... Then on the, on the 3rd, I was at the Eastlake Center also for the proclamation of the International Day of Persons with Disabilities. It's really something else to work out on one of those hand, upside-down bicycle things. It was, it really works your shoulders. What did you call it again?
Crank bike.
Oh, crank bike, yeah. Upside-down bike. December 4th, I had a Pursuit of Excellence Meeting. On December 5th, 7:30 in the morning, I attended, along with other members, the annual volunteer breakfast at Golden Age Center. Of course, the Rotarians did a good job, and Helen walks away with a nice big door prize. That was really good. And later that day, I was at a subdivision appeal board hearing. And a little later, later that day, was seniors' Christmas dinner at the Golden Age Center again. December 9th, I went to a birthday party. One-year birthday party, and I brought some donations for the food bank at the Eastlake Center. One year, it's been open, and what a party they were having there. They had cake and drinks. And they were demonstrating on our dry field there. The, there was hula hoop, gals doing demonstrations, dancing, yoga, just all kinds of things that were happening there. And...
You didn't participate.
No, I didn't have a big enough hula hoop. And today, I also was reading a book at The Kids Place, the story reading at the Dave Bar. I read Dr. Seuss, ABC. There's more different names in there that I, weren't there when I had the Dr. Seuss and Greenham book. So, that was it, Mayor.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Counselor Monroe?
Thanks very much, Mayor Gibbon. On 27th, 28th, I was also part of council that went to the legislature. And I think it's already been said, but I think it was really an outstanding event. The 29th, I attended the Chamber Mixer at the Showcase Center. Also, shortly after that, I went to GPRC where I got an update on the hospital. And I've got to say, I'm quite excited about what they've got in store for that hospital. I think it's really going to be quite a fantastic site. On the 30th, I took part in the annexation info session for council. On the 3rd of December, I went down and tried, down to the Eastlake Center for the proclamation of the International Day of Persons with Disabilities, and tried the crank bike while sitting in a wheelchair. And I've got to say, it's, I was surprised at how much of a workout it actually was. So, it was, it was quite a nice event. Did breakfast for the volunteer services, volunteer services annual breakfast at the Golden Age Center. And once again, congratulations to Jennifer Douglas on a job well-done over the course of the last year. Later on that evening, I was back at the Golden Age Center, bringing greetings on behalf of Mayor Gibbon and all of council to the Golden Age Center's annual Christmas party. On the 6th, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Annual General Meeting, and just wanted to say thanks very much to Rob Neal, the now-past president of the Chamber of Commerce. I think he did a fantastic job over the course of the last year with the chamber. Attended some more annexation meetings on the 7th, and I think that was actually it.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Gibbon. I was also at the legislature on the 27th and 28th. And a lot has been, a lot of good things have been said, and I definitely agree it was definitely worth the city going out there and talking to the MLAs from all over the province of Alberta, so they have an understanding of what we're up against. On, what do I got here? On the 29th, I attended the Regional Hospital Information Session. And once again, good things. I'm very excited about the future there. On Saturday, the 1st, I attended World's Aid Day Proclamation Reading and Film Festival at the Grand Prairie Live Theater. We have, Counselor Radburn gave greetings on behalf of yourself. It was a very informative video, a presentation that they showed, with some good discussion prior and after the viewing. On the 2nd, I went to the Santa Claus Parade and handed out candy. And I want to thank Jody once again, and her daughter, Isabella. She probably worked as hard as we did, filling the buckets and stuff like that. Shortly after that parade, I went down to the Wapiti Shooters Club and tried to shoot a turkey, which actually was just a piece of paper, but it was unsuccessful. It was all done by luck, not by skill. Okay? Clarify that one right off the bat. Yeah. And on the 3rd of December, I attended the International Day of Persons with Disabilities proclamation. And yes, we ended up doing a number of events, exercises, and skills while we were in a wheelchair. And let's see, what else we got here? Breakfast on the 5th, volunteer day, and also later on that night, the Golden Age Annual Christmas Party was, was actually quite a nice event. There was some talent at towards the end that was local, that was actually quite interesting and quite good. And we stayed till quite late, actually. And let's see, what else? We got the 29th, I attended the Chamber AGM, and congratulations to our new, or the new person that is now the president, and Rob Neal. Thank you very much for a job done very well. On the 7th, we've got the South Peace Archives that I attended, and I left that meeting and opened tenders here at city hall. On the 1st, no, on the 8th, I got a call from Santa Claus, and he needed someone to help him out. And he said I would fit the description, so I helped him a little bit on Saturday. And I can't tell you these things.
North Pole, all right?
Helen, there's certain things that you're not privy to, okay? And on the 9th, my grandchildren come over and help set up our Christmas tree at our home. And today, we, a number of us went to Kids Place and read stories and participated in some preschool activities. So, we'll leave it at that. Thank you very much, Mayor Gibbon.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. November 27th, 28th, I was also in Edmonton with the team. I think Aquatera was there, too. And I'm not sure if we've mentioned Aquatera, but Baron Mans and board member Chris Lebosier was there. And I really do think that having the community representatives joining our team was very effective. I also attend the Unmanned Vehicle Project meeting for a little while to get a bit of an update that Jennifer organized. Went to the new hospital information session on the 29th as well. 30th, City Council Committee the whole. And because of that, I did miss the Grand Spirit Foundation meeting, but I've been since, been informed that I am, been elected as vice chair again, and I'm on the Labor Management Committee and the Labor Negotiations Committee. December 1st, World AIDS Day proclamation. I was pleased to be able to share that on behalf of Mayor Gibbon and council. Thanks for, to Kevin and Kathy for joining me that evening. And Santa Claus Parade. I also wanted to thank Jody and her daughter for their yeoman service and keeping us stocked, shall we say. And also, I thought our float was excellent again. I think, I think we have a good person to work with in that regard. International Day of Person with Disabilities proclamation and exercise class? Wasn't expecting the exercise class. Thank you to Counselor Crokin for being my, my coach and supervisor.
And it was brist by your whole back.
Yeah, you're right. December 5th, Volunteer Service Bureau Volunteer Day Celebration Breakfast. And I also, fellow Rotarian Jennifer Douglas, thank, congratulations to her. And the Golden Age Christmas Party. It was a really a nice evening, a nice evening. Good group of people to be with and to chat with. Chamber of Commerce AGM, I concur with Counselor Monroe. I think Rob Neal did an excellent job as president, and Shawna Miller. Good luck to her and her committee. And I was part of city-county annexation discussions on the 7th. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. As well, I was with the team on November 27th, 28th in the City of Edmonton. And it was quite well organized by the community. And thank you, hats off to the mayor for having this open house, because it really means a lot when you have the chamber there, public and Catholic schools, Aquatera, construction industry. I think we didn't have quite half MLAs, but pretty darn close that showed up in there to view and to talk. Raj Sherman, Leader of Alberta Liberal Party, Daniel Smith, Wild Rose, deputy premier was there, speaker was there. There was a number of individuals there. Went over really well that evening. But one of the highlights as well for me was meeting with the ministers and our concerns. And we heard 43X brought up tonight and other stuff. Hopefully, it's sooner than later, was that we were introduced by the Honorable Minister Wayne Drysdale as a team, and we all stood up. But one that caught me by surprise as well was Leader of Alberta Liberal Party, Raj Sherman introduced me for running in the election. But not just me, he mentioned my wife, Tina McLean, and my children, Kendra and Cara McLean. And because it is a family when you're running that are behind you and help you in democracy. So, I thought that was pretty good. And we learned something sitting at one of the meetings. It's all on camera in the legislature when they're doing the bills and everything. But they also do a book per sitting. So, every word, everything is recorded and videoed. So, it was pretty neat to see that. As well, I went to the new Regional Hospital Information Session. I brought my children, Kendra and Cara. My wife Tina came as well, but we didn't realize it was going to be an hour and a half of speaking. We thought it'd be 10, 15 minutes and view displays. But we did view the overfill room with how the hospital's going to look and 3D. And the one thing I really liked, there's going to be four bays for ambulances as well. As you know, the new one here, the older hospital has one bay, I believe it is. And they might be able to fit two in. So, I'm hoping maybe there might be two standbys in there that they can go to that area of the city to help. I don't know how that's going to be. Maybe some other councillors can answer that. But it's definitely, see four bays for ambulances would be, is very crucial, I do believe. November 30th, I was also at the City Council Committee as a whole on annexation. And looking forward to getting it done. It's going on and on, so hopefully someday it'll be done. And I also attended that the same day and made it barely in time for two tender openings. One is for the 100th rehabilitation on the bridge. It's over 50 years old. If you walk underneath it, you hope not a piece of concrete fall on top of you. It looks like it's going to public works tomorrow, and I believe there was eight or nine tenders on that project. So, whichever one's picked, I look forward to getting started, commencing this winter and being finished in the summer, because they say it could last another 40, 50 years once it's done. So, the bridge has already done a major lifespan as well. And also, the other tender was for DTS, Disability Transfer Service. Two buses. There was three tenders in or something for that. And they hold 10 people, six, for six individuals in a wheelchair and for four walk-ons. So, I think that's going to help our community immensely once we get the tender out and it comes to public works. I don't think it's coming tomorrow, but maybe after that. And they get the buses for the summer. Would be really good. As well, I attended the Santa Claus Parade. Thank you, Helen. You really deserve lots of a big pat on the back. I did give you a candy cane walking by when you were outside during the cold weather. It wasn't attended as well as the year before, otherwise I think we would have been close, not running out of candy. But also, commend some city staff members that really worked their butt off on that. David and Jody do really well. And like you say, it was very cold that day, so the ones that did show turnout were dressed well. And December 5th, I also attended the Golden Age Christmas Celebration, and thank you, Counselor Monroe. Your deputy mayor greetings for the mayor was very well received. As well, when I went the year before, it wasn't as many there, and I think the cold weather affected some individuals attending. It was still very well attended, but there was, the one before, you could even barely move. I have to throw one more thing. We all know Saturday night was pretty darn cold. And Sunday, there was, my wife Tina's involved in the Grand Prairie Run Club, and there was about 40 individuals that came out Sunday morning for a run at Mississippi Park for to raise money for food bank. It's more just for fun and being in shape. And they raised about 600 bucks and collected some food. It's a way to go. I was involved in that. And I just want to say a thank you to Robert Carroll and to our snowmobbing crew, like Counselor Rice was saying. Let's be honest, we've had a big dump of snow. They've done a very good job. And like I tell a lot of people in the community, like for years, you're lucky to see a grader once down your main road. I've had it once this year. So, winter hasn't started, so I'm hoping to see it a couple more times. And I do believe once it stops snowing, they'll be down the residential streets and cleaning them up. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. So, obviously, I attended in Edmonton with the rest of the members of council and our community partners on our advocacy mission. Back in Grand Prairie on the 29th, I also attended the presentation on the Regional Hospital and Health and Education Center. The thing that stood out for me the most was that that was the first time that I'd heard a solid commitment to the parking structure... heard a solid commitment to the parking structure. There'd always been sort of a space for it and it was great to hear the announcement that, that would open in conjunction with the hospital, that the structure housing, I believe, 1,100 parking stalls will be in place. And so, I know that that was a community concern. It was good to hear that there finally is a commitment to that. I also was at Santa Claus Parade downtown and I'd like to echo my thanks to Jody and her daughter Isabella for keeping us all straight and going. On the 5th, I was also at the Volunteer Services Bureau Breakfast for Volunteer Day. And later that day, I was able to attend at the Comps at High School and give a presentation to the comps leadership class. They have a combined 10, 11, 12 class and it was great to speak to the, the youth about leadership, about the ways and the ways that they can be involved in our community. On the 6th, I was also, of course, at the Chamber AGM. It was my honor to swear in new chamber president Shawna Miller. Congratulations to her and her team and looking forward to working with them in the year to come. And later that day, I was at Mother Teresa at Mr. Smart's grade five class to participate in the Tobacco Free Kids Program. I think I was invited by the two nursing students that were running the program. It was the fourth of four days for the students and I was there to share a little bit of my perspective from city council. I was able to tell the kids about our new bylaw that restricts smoking within distance from parks and share the challenges that our Parks Department have with cigarette butts and how they don't biodegrade. The kids certainly appreciated that. And I had the chance to be able to help them hand out their certificates of completion for going through the program. I don't think it was intended that way and, but all the kids enjoyed being able to do the official handshake and pose for photograph and Mr. Smart had to take photos of every student. And I've noticed a few of them popping up on Facebook already. And then, of course, I was also in attendance at the annexation meetings on Friday with the county. If there is nothing else for our meeting, then I'll, then I'll call our meeting adjourned. This is, thank you, Councilor Rice, for the reminder. This is our last meeting of the year and so, from everybody on council and to everybody at home, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and we'll see everybody in 2013. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.